Good evening, welcome to our Pullman City Council meeting for this Tuesday, July 13th, and it's great to actually see a full audience. This is the first time in how many months now, 16 months or whatever it was, it's been a long time. And welcome, I'm glad we have a couple of presentations today to bring all of you here. So we'll have that coming up in just a couple of minutes. Right now, let's take role, and Dee, would you please take a role?
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman. Councilmember McCall.
Here.
Councilmember Parks.
Here.
Councilmember Records. Councilmember Sorenson.
Here.
Councilmember Weller.
Present.
Councilmember Wright.
We were notified by both Brandon Chapman and Dan Records they could not be here tonight. Do I hear a motion to excuse?
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? For that, under announcements tonight, the annual Consumer Confident Report is now available from the City of Pullman website. In 2020, the City of Pullman Water Department treated and distributed 886 million gallons of water. More facts of water quality and the average daily usage is available on that report on our website. Pullman Parks and Recreation excited to announce at Concerts in the Park, the Summer Concert Series, what it used to be called Every Wednesday, starting tomorrow through August 18th at 6 o'clock at Rainy Park. This will also be the first time we'll have our new portable stage up, so you can take a look at that. And so we're really looking forward to that, and also check out movies in the park starting this Friday through August 6th at 8:00 PM also at Rainy Park. If you haven't yet, you can stop by the Pullman Farmers Market on Wednesday from 3:30 to 6:30 at the Brawlsford Visitor Center. Whitman County Humane Society presents Cruisin' for the Critters Poker Run this Sunday, July 18th, in the Zeppos Parking Lot. You can visit whitmanpets.org for more information. And next weekend, on Saturday, July 24th, you can stop by Gladish Community and Cultural Center for the first annual community yard sale. For space reservations, you can visit the Gladish website. Those are the announcements tonight, and now we have some special presentations tonight. So first of all, we have the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52 Law and Orders Award, and Jerry Coker is the American Legion Commander, so you can come to the podium and make the presentations. And nice to have you here, and we always look forward to these awards, and glad we can do it in person. And some of you recognize our former police chief Ted Weatherly, who's also big in the American Legion, and I think you were the commander, right?
Yes.
Your past commander?
Past commander.
Okay.
Mayor Johnson and City Council members, it is an honor to be here tonight to present American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52 Law and Order Awards. I'd like to make a couple introductions before we start. The first is Penny Martinez, our District 7 Commander, James Womack, our Area 4 Vice Commander, and our newly elected Department of Washington Commander, Rick Soucy.
Nice to have you all here.
Okay, our American Legion post is composed of wartime military veterans who honorably served this nation during World War I and from December 7th, 1941, until they're present and are committed to mentoring youth and sponsoring wholesome programs in our community, advocating patriotism and honor, promoting strong national security, and continued devotion to our fellow service members and veterans. The awards that we regularly present are the Medal of Valor, which is not restricted to public safety personnel, but may be awarded to any person who distinguishes them conspicuously by actions that involve a serious risk to personal welfare and safety wherein there is an act of heroism performed at the risk of serious injury. Eligibility for the Medal of Valor requires that the act of valor occur in the City of Pullman. Firefighter of the Year Award, which is restricted to a member of local county or state fire departments. Our post requires that the firefighter's action must be incurred in or been involved in the behalf of the City of Pullman. Emergency Medical Technician of the Year Award is restricted to certified firefighters who reside and are assigned within the State of Washington, and the recognition must have been for actions within the City of Pullman. The awards I have just mentioned to you had no candidate provided to our post for 2019. We encourage any citizen or public safety official to contact our American Legion post at Post Office Box 24 in Pullman, 99163, any American Legion member, or the Pullman Police or Fire Departments with nomination this year for 2021. Other awards we normally present will be awarded tonight. The first award being presented tonight is the Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award, which is restricted to a member of local county or state law enforcement agencies. Our post requires that the officer's actions must have occurred in or been involved on behalf of the State of Pullman, or City of Pullman. The Pullman Police criteria for this award is that an officer's work during the past year that has best exemplified excellence in the law enforcement contribution to the Police Department and the community. Tonight, that award is presented to Pullman Police Officer TJ Cornish. Officer Cornish, please come forward. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded the nomination for this award and stated, "Officer TJ Cornish has been an officer with the Pullman Police since January 2014. Because of his initiative, skill, and work ethic, Officer Cornish has become a valuable contribution to the professionalism and success of the Pullman Police Department. Officer Cornish is a department instructor for emergency vehicle operations and TASER, both critical officer performance skills. TJ is a member of the regional SWAT team, a radio and radar, LiDAR technician, and computer and digital guidance examiner. This commitment to the professionalism and quality of staff hired by the Pullman Police Department is very evident in his work as a pre-employment background investigator. TJ's ability to identify police officers' candidates with only the highest ethical standards ensures that the Pullman Police Department can be a trusted and respected community partner. In addition to his current duties as a detective, Cornish has taken on critical collateral responsibilities while remaining eager to help his fellow officers. TJ is highly competent and always exhibits a positive and helpful attitude. As a result, his peers trust and appreciate his assistance. Officer Cornish exemplifies a Pullman Police Department's mission statement of policing our community with compassion and professionalism. His ability, hard work, and dedication to excellence greatly facilitates our organization vision that Pullman Police is a leader in the law enforcement profession." It is my honor to nominate Officer TJ Cornish for the 2020 Law Enforcement Officer of the Year Award due to his significant contribution to the Pullman Police Department and the Pullman Community, and his embodiment of our core values of integrity, dedication, courage, trust, and respect. His work during the past year exemplifies excellence in law enforcement contributions to the department and the community. I present you with this award. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
I'll have to apologize if I butcher anybody's name because I have trouble sometimes. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present Officer Cornish a certificate acknowledging the 2020 Outstanding Law Enforcement Officer of the Year. In addition, his name has been inscribed on a plaque that is displayed at the Pullman Police Department. The next award being presented tonight are the Humanitarian and Life Saving Awards, which are not restricted to public service personnel, but may be given to any member of the community who either has performed an act that resulted in the saving of a life or has performed an act that is considered humanitarian in nature. The first award is presented to Pullman Police Sergeant Todd Dow. Sergeant Dow, please come forward. Okay, I'll... Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded the nomination for this award and stated, "On October 11, 2020, at about 11:41 PM, Sergeant Todd Dow responded to a report of unconscious male breathing strangely on Pioneer Hill. Upon arrival, Sergeant Dow found the subject's breathing to be agnargo. He administered two doses of Narcan and the patient regained consciousness, later admitting to drug use. Sergeant Dow's action saved his life. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present Sergeant Dow a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." Okay.
Just give us a minute, I forgot to have him sign these.
The next Humanitarian and Life Saving Award is presented to Sergeant Aaron Beshears. Have I got the wrong page? Oh, okay. You can tell we're always organized.
This should be...
Okay.
That should be number two.
Yeah, okay, there we go. We get there. The award is presented to Officer Heidi Lamley, Tiana McNary, Brianna Banks, and Kyla Knoxall. Will these four officers please come forward? Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded nomination for this award and stated, "On May 21, 2020, at about 11:00 PM, Officers Heidi Lamley, Tiana McNary, Brianna Banks, Ashley Lamb, and Kyla Knoxall responded to a report of breathing emergency at a fraternity on College Hill. The patient was unconscious, not breathing effectively, and turning purple. Each officer was involved in preparing or administering CPR and AED or Narcan. Within five minutes of the 9/11 call being received, the patient was conscious and somewhat oriented, as medics took over care and transported him to the hospital. Multiple medics commended the officers for their highly effective teamwork in rendering and commented that upon arrival, they had not expected the patient to survive. An ER doctor noted that she had no doubt that the patient would have died were it not for the quick response and effective efforts of the officers. The action of the officers saved the patient's life. On behalf of the American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to these four officers each a certificate acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." Okay, the next Humanitarian and Life Saving Award is presented to Sergeant Todd Dow and Officer Brianna Banks, their second such award tonight. Sergeant Dow and Officer Banks, please come forward. Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded nomination for this award and stated, "On March 1, 2020, at about 3:00 AM, Sergeant Todd Dow and Officer Brianna Banks responded with other officers to a report of a patient not breathing and turning blue at a residence on Military Hill. Officer Banks began CPR while Sergeant Dow administered an AED. The AED shocked the patient, who regained consciousness and was transported to the hospital. The officer's actions saved the patient's life. On behalf of American Legion Maynard Prize Post 52, it is my honor to present to Sergeant Todd Dow and Officer Brianna Banks certificates acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award." The next Humanitarian and Life Saving Award is presented to Sergeant Aaron Beshears, Officers Wayne Gardner, Officer Brian Chamberlain, Officers Nema Nathan-Patra. Would the sergeant and the three officers please come forward? Pullman Police Chief Gary Jenkins forwarded the nominations for this award and stated, "On July 1, 2020, at about 3:15 PM, Sergeant Aaron Beshears and Officer Wade Wine Gardner, Brian Chamberlain, and Nathan Petra responded to a 911 hang-up call where only an address was provided at a residence on Sunnyside Hill. The officers located the caller in the backyard, holding a shotgun to his abdomen and tensing in anticipation of pulling the trigger. Officer Chamberlain began crisis intervention efforts while Sergeant Beshears managed the incident. Officers Wayne Gardner and Petra provided additional less lethal force options. After approximately 20 minutes of one-way communications to the subject, he put the shotgun down, stood up, and followed the officer's command into handcuffs, allowing them to transport him to the hospital for evaluation. The officer's actions saved his life. The criteria for this award includes the following information. The nominee is entitled to the American Legion Heroism Medal if the nominee took direct action, which is exceptional, or heroic courage was apparent, and when the nominee faced danger and the result likely saved a life. The actions in this case warranted a medal. In addition, this incident was submitted to the American Legion Department of Washington to be in competition for recognition in the State of Washington. The officers were recognized at the American Legion Convention in Bellevue earlier this month. They were presented a plaque. Tonight, these four will be presented with certificates acknowledging the American Legion Humanitarian and Life Saving Award and the American Legion Heroism Medal."
Obviously, we had a rehearsal beforehand. My name's Rick Soucy, I'm the commander of the American Legion Department of Washington, and I'm here to represent the department to award humanitarian awards to four officers. Now, each post in the State of Washington can submit their post winners for five categories: Law Enforcement Officer of the Year, Firefighter Officer of the Year, Paramedic EMT of the Year, and 911 Operator of the Year. Did I say EMT of the Year, too? And that's why some of these are doubled up, because they have a post award, but because these officers won the state award, they get a bigger thing. And a medal to hang around their neck, and we did give the Police Department a plaque to hang in the Police Department. So I'm going to read the citation. Citation to accompany the award of the Humanitarian of the Year 2021, Sergeant Aaron Beshears, Officer Wade Wine Gardner, Officer Brian Chamberlain, Officer Nathan Petra of the Pullman Police Department. "On July 1, 2020, Sergeant Aaron Beshears and Officer Wine Gardner, Brian Chamberlain, and Nathan Petra responded to a 911 hang-up call where only an address was provided at a residence on Sunnyside Hill. The officers located the caller in the backyard, holding a shotgun to his abdomen, and tensing in anticipation of pulling the trigger. Officer Chamberlain began crisis intervention efforts while Sergeant Beshears managed the incident. Officers Wine Gardner and Petra provided additional less lethal force options. After approximately 20 minutes of one-way communications to the subject, he put the shotgun down, stood up, and followed the officer's commands into handcuffs, allowing them to transport him to the hospital for evaluation. The officer's actions saved his life. Sergeant Beshears, Officer Wine Gardner, Officer Chamberlain, Officer Petra, for your exceptional service to your community, state, and nation, the American Legion of Washington awards you the Humanitarian of the Year for 2021."
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Well, we appreciate the presentation, we congratulate our officers, and especially winning the state award, and we know that's not the first time that Pullman Police officers have won the state award, or Pullman Fire Department officers have won the state award. So again, congratulations. That, we move to another outstanding citizen, Pullman Police Department Life Saving Award. For this, we go to our Police Chief Gary Jenkins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll just note that the Police Department presented all of those officers with our own Life Saving Awards as well, so we're very proud of them. Can I please ask Whitcom Dispatcher Brittany Sanders and Whitcom Dispatcher Jen Luft to step up? So, we regularly recognize our police and fire personnel, but a lot of times, the forgotten piece of this puzzle are the dispatchers, who are a critical link between our community and emergency responders. So tonight, we're going to recognize two of them, and it's from the same incident that the officers were recognized with the state award, but you'll hear a little bit different perspective. On July 1, 2020, Pullman Police responded to a 911 hang-up call, which was answered by Dispatcher Sanders. Although the caller was muffled, Dispatcher Sanders was able to make out a Sunnyside Hill address. She used rapid SOS to plot the caller's cellphone She used rapid SOS to plot the caller's cell phone coordinates. Dispatcher Left assisted in dispatching the call and began to research the phone number against call history from addresses in the area. Officers located the caller in the backyard of her residence, who was holding a shotgun to his abdomen and tensing in anticipation of pulling the trigger. And after 20 minutes of negotiation, they convinced the person to give himself up and to not harm himself. And a lot of this was because, first of all, they were able to find him because of the dispatcher's actions. So it's with great pride that I present to both of you the Pullman Police Department Meritorious Life Saving Award in recognition of your actions which directly contributed to the saving or preservation of human life. I also have another award to present tonight. Can I ask Jason Kennedy and Caico Morado to step up? On May 17, 2021, Pullman officers responded to an attempted robbery that had just taken place in the downtown area. A male subject had crossed Grand Avenue and approached two pedestrians, demanding money and threatening them with a skateboard. Mr. Kennedy witnessed these events while working nearby and decided to intervene. After walking to the parking area of the location, he yelled at the suspect, who left on foot. Ms. Morado quickly called 911, providing a description that resulted in the apprehension of the suspect. If you see something, say something is a request that we make of community members regularly. By stepping in quickly and safely, you help to spare the victim's harm. This type of bystander intervention is invaluable to the safety of the Pullman community. So with great pride that I present to you the Pullman Police Department Outstanding Citizen Award in recognition of your extraordinary contributions to the safety of our Pullman community.
Thank you, Gary. And again, congratulations, and thank you for stepping in. And thank you all for being here tonight, too, as well. We now move to item D on the agenda tonight. This is the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine in nature. The councils had a chance to look these over ahead of time. Do I hear a motion to read by title only?
So moved.
Moved and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, Laura McAlune, our consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Your consent agenda consists of a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the regular meeting of June 22, 2021, and approve them as submitted; a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the special meeting of June 26, 2021, and approve them as submitted; a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 6252021 totaling $39,668.94; a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 103524 through 103601 totaling $268,440.05; a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 103602 through 103649 totaling $215,656.68; a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 103650 through 103658; electronic transfers 1920 and 734 through 738; payroll checks numbered 74921 and payroll direct deposits numbered 69519 through 69836 totaling $896,921.30; a motion to approve dispersments for accounts payable checks numbered 103659 through 103703 totaling $1,593,596.73; a motion to approve the transfer of sales tax revenue to CIP Reserve Fund for 2021, quarter two, in the amount of $244,211; and a motion to approve the contract with Vector Solutions for fire department online scheduling software.
Is there any item the council would like off for discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of items 1 through 9. Do we hear a motion to approve?
Second.
Moved and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, we now move to the regular agenda. First items and ordinance of the city relating to the addition of definitions of fowl and hens in amendments to the municipal code. And with that, RJ Lott.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. This item before you on the agenda is amendments to the municipal code, and it comes in two parts. The first part is the addition of two definitions for municipal code section 17.05. In alphabetical order, they are fowl and hen, so I'll read fowl here briefly. Any domestic bird commonly raised for meat, eggs, including but not limited to chickens, ducks, turkeys, and geese. And hen, which means a female chicken. The second part of this ordinance relates to animals and fowl section, municipal code section 17.35.050. This one's a little bit more difficult to follow, so I'll break it down the best I can for you. Animals and fowl are divided into three categories in our municipal code. The first is household pets. Those are pretty commonplace, such as dogs, cats, and this would now include hens as a household pet. So this ordinance would allow for up to six hens per dwelling unit. Animals are allowed in, household pets, excuse me, are allowed in any residential zone that allows for dwelling units. The additional changes would be the maximum number of household pets over six months of age. So this would include up to six hens, provided that the cumulative number of dogs, cats, rabbits, and hens per dwelling unit does not exceed eight pets. The pens, dog runs, hen coops, or similar structures to house those animals shall conform to the minimum required yard setbacks for the underlying zone for which those animals are housed. Additionally, said structures must be located at least 20 feet from any perennial or intermittent water course. The second category for animals or fowl is what is called small domestic animals and fowl. This category would allow for up to six hens per dwelling unit, including one or more miniature pigs. Additionally, the minimum square feet per hen is at 1,000 square feet and 2,000 square feet for any other animal. The structures or pens similar to household pets need to conform to the minimum required yard standards for setbacks, and also be 20 feet from any perennial or intermittent water course. The last section of animals or fowl is large domestic animals or fowl. This would include any chicken that is not a hen. Other changes include 5,000 square feet of land per goat or sheep, and 1,000 square feet per individual fowl. This would also include said structures or pens for these animals to be at least 20 feet from any perennial water course, and 40 feet from any property line. So this is a slight different change from the underlying zoning, for so large animals have a larger, essentially, setback from property lines or neighboring structures. Some items that don't change with this ordinance include the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet for small domestic animals, 20,000 square feet for large domestic animals. So the main change here in this ordinance is that for household pets, up to six hens are allowed without approval from the city. Small domestic animals or large domestic animals do require an approval from the planning director. Are there any questions at this time?
Nathan?
Yeah, thank you. I had a question. Somebody posed the thought that you're talking about fowl here, but raptors for falconry, it seems like out of the, but considering this is in the code as well, so I wasn't sure if that's something we've looked at, so.
Yeah, I don't know if those kind of animals are specifically included. I'd have to go back and read through the definitions.
I don't think they are, but somebody had asked me, and considering this was up today, thought I'd ask the expert, so, yeah.
Yeah, I can certainly look into that and get back to you.
Thank you.
I know we've had raptors in the county, which is allowed, but Laura, do you have any additional on that?
I apologize, I couldn't hear Councilman Weller.
Sorry. Raptors for falconry.
Whether they're currently permitted?
Whether they're currently permitted or...
I don't believe they are defined, so they would not be permitted.
Okay.
They're not included in the definition of a fowl or a hen.
I know with WSU's Raptor Club, like I said, the question had been posed to me, but I'm not sure. It may be under different ordinances with WSU anyways.
Yeah, I have not had anybody come forward with those questions or requests to keep those animals.
Okay. Eileen?
I may have missed it. We were talking a lot about hens here. What about roosters?
Yeah, so roosters, which is really included in the definition of fowl. So we're trying to separate hens and roosters because primarily of the noise differences. So roosters would be considered fowl, and those would not be qualified as a household pet.
But are they permitted in the city?
Yes, they would be under the small domestic and large domestic animal categories. And those would require the 10,000 or 20,000 square foot lots, which are in residential zones quite rare.
Pretty rare, yeah.
Because I know we hear them in the morning.
Oh, we certainly do. We hear them all day long.
Just in case you thought they weren't there, okay. Other questions? Al?
Couple of questions here. You know, we've had some recent emails to the council about wild animals in town, raccoons, foxes, all that kind of thing. And with this being approved here, and all of a sudden, we're starting to have chickens in town, I would expect there to be an increase in coyotes, raccoons, fox, rats, all kinds of things coming into town. Have we addressed that at all in regards to informing people or any of that? You know, it's country living in the city, and they're going to get it, and it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, and I believe that those issues were discussed at the planning commission back in December of 2019, when this was first brought up. I was not here at that time, so I don't know how that discussion ultimately ended up, but that was definitely the consideration of the planning commission at that time.
Okay, I just, I think we need to be prepared to be able to answer those questions and respond to those concerns that, oh, I've got a raccoon family living here now. And, I mean, it's because they've got the chickens there. I mean, so I just, I want us to be ready for that, because we've already got a problem with people being concerned about that.
Eileen?
Yeah, sorry to follow up on that. Yeah, sorry to follow up on that. Is enforcement of this, is this fall under code enforcement, or is this, yeah?
Yeah, so code enforcement would.
Code enforcement?
Yeah.
Okay.
We could certainly assist in fielding those questions or concerns, and then work with code enforcement. But any type of citation or anything like that would come through code enforcement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion on this ordinance?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and second. Laura, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 21-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Pullman, Whitman County, Washington, relating to zoning, amending Pullman City Code chapters 17.05 and 17.35, amending ordinance numbers 14-12 2014, 14-4 2014, 03-33 2003, 02-32 2002, 01-5 2001, 00-8 2000, 00-3 2000, 99-49 1999, 96-19 1996, 87-9 1987, and other matters properly related thereto.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, RJ. Next, we go to item number two. It's a resolution accepting the bid of Sean Cole Construction. And with that, we have Clayton Forsman, our Deputy Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. The Sarah M. Moore Memorial River Nook contract includes construction of an elevated memorial observation deck adjacent to the South Fork Palouse River on the Neil Public Library site. The project utilizes existing natural space along the library's east sidewalk to create additional seating and relaxation space for our community to enjoy both before and after their library visit. The deck is being built in memory of Sarah M. Moore, who was a longtime volunteer at the library. Unfortunately, I did not have the pleasure of meeting Sarah. However, I imagine some of you may have known her. Our library director, Joanna Bailey, provided me with the following information, which I would like to share now. Sarah was as creative as she was talented. For many years, Sarah created eye-catching bulletin board art that captivated young readers of all ages. She loved nature and was instrumental in designing and planting many of the plants around the library that still thrive today. It was in 2008 when Sarah partnered with the library to envision and plan the creation of this River Nook project. The project is funded entirely through private donations through friends of the Neil Public Library, with the majority of the funding coming from Matthew Root, Sarah's husband. Also of note, local firm Reliant Engineering prepared the engineering design drawings and contract specifications for the project, and a large portion of those engineering services were donated. Bids for the project were opened on June 22, with one bid received. The bidder was Sean Cole Construction Incorporated at $83,524.09, which includes bid alternate number one. The engineer's estimate is $70,395.12. Staff presented the bid results to the project proponents, and although the bid exceeded the engineer's estimate, they are willing to continue and fund the project in its entirety. Therefore, it is staff's recommendation that council adopt the resolution accepting the bid of Sean Cole Construction Incorporated. The project is included in the approved 2021 to 2026 capital improvement program. That concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, we'll go to Al first, and then we'll go to Nathan.
Thank you. Thanks, Clayton. I think this is great that there's a wonderful project being done here. However, I have very little information with this presentation. I don't have any drawings, I don't have any location, I don't know what's going to be done, I haven't seen anything, I can't recall anything ever being brought to us, and I have a little bit of a problem just saying, yeah, okay, go ahead and spend $83,000 on something, I don't know what it's going to be. Do you have any information for me that you can show? Obviously, you just said there was some design drawings and things done. I mean, we could have people donate money all the time to the city with a project, but we don't know what's happening with it.
Sure, I don't have anything that I could pull up on the spot, Al. I do have some drawings here in my contract. Basically, it's a deck, it's 244 square feet. It overlooks the South Fork, and it's located on the north side, northeast corner of the library. So we have a concrete walkway through there, and it overlooks the river. I could certainly start bringing those pictures or, you know, more information on city projects, but I'm not used to doing that. So I'd be glad to do that or send you drawings.
Okay, I mean, even the bid doesn't break anything down for me. I mean, and I'm not being a downer for the project, but don't get me wrong there, I'm just like, I don't even know what I'm approving. So I've got to have that kind of thing in order to do this. That's the first I heard of how big it was going to be. So I would appreciate more information whenever we come with something like this. I don't know, I mean, the planning commission must have saw something, but we're not getting it here. So that would be great if you could do that. Thank you.
Okay. Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Al brings up a good point, but I do know that this has been discussed when I was on the Neil Public as an ans- discussed when I was on the Neil Public, as in Ann's position with the Neil Public Library Board, and this has been anticipated for many, many years, I personally know Dr. Matthew Root, I know several of us do, he's, and I didn't get the chance to know Sarah as well as I wish I could, but I know both of them are such an important part of our community. I appreciate you bringing this forward and I'd like to see this move forward, so thank you so much, and if Dr. Root is listening, it's a great project and thank you for the gift to the community.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion on this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second, Laura?
Resolution number R-38-21, a resolution accepting the bid of Sean Cole Construction Incorporated for the Sarah M. Moore Memorial River Nook Project and authorizing execution and delivery of the contract for said project.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One nay. With that, thank you, Clayton. Move to item number three, it's a resolution authorizing the execution of a ground lease between the City of Pullman and Horizon Realty Advisors, and once again, Clayton Forsman.
Thank you again, Mayor. Horizon Realty Advisors LLC, operators of the Kuke Housing Office located at 820 Northeast Colorado Street, approached city staff about improving the area adjacent to their building along Colorado Street. Their proposal included removing the existing landscaping and replacing with a new outdoor seating area. Their objective is to add curb appeal to their property and make it more inviting. Similar improvements along Colorado Street have been constructed in recent years, notably at Cougar Cottage and Valhalla. This new proposed seating area will not serve a commercial function, but instead be primarily used as overflow space for their rental office, which is located on the ground floor of the building. Since a large portion of the seating area would be located within the public right-of-way, a ground lease has been prepared and is attached for council consideration. The annual rent is $257.69 and the initial term is 20 years. Staff is supportive of the proposed project, as it includes sidewalk improvements along Colorado Street, those consist of removing the existing five-foot wide sidewalk and replacing with a new seven-foot wide sidewalk. The general action requested of the City Council tonight is to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the execution of a ground lease with Horizon Realty Advisors LLC, I'd be glad to take any questions.
Questions of, Clayton, Nathan?
I will echo something that Al has already brought up, it would be nice to see where this is specifically.
They have a drawing here at the bottom of the resolution.
Somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, it's on Colorado Street and shows the mark at B Street.
Well, I mean, what they're going to do.
What it's gonna look like?
Yeah, what it's going to look like. I think, you know, the challenge, I know that area, I've walked it, I'm sure many of us have a long time, there are a lot of parties that occur in that area, and I would personally be a little concerned about, not necessarily overflow of that business, but overflow of students partying in that area. So I have concerns, but I'll yield to other council members.
Al?
Al's listening to me, thank you. I have similar concerns to Councilmember Sorenson, that sidewalk, we've talked about that a lot, there's been a lot of talk about that sidewalk over the years, because it is, it's about as bad as it can be, it's really lumpy and humpy and it's been ground and all sorts of, you know, Band-Aids put on it, so I am supportive of the project, I'm not concerned about sort of, you know, people hanging out there. What I am concerned about, and I would have raised this in the previous project about the Sarah Moore project, I'm worried about, when I'm seeing the price of materials these days, it just scares the socks off of me, so if we don't have a little more complete information from what they're attempting to do, if they tear something up and they get halfway through it and they run out of money, where, what are we left with? Now, I know that Dr. Root would, was gonna continue and finish that project no matter what, because I know him and I know the motivation behind what he's doing, and I'm not casting aspersions on these people's motivations, but do we have any way of sort of holding these people to the, you know, to the task and saying, well, you know, when I look at the price of lumber every week, it's just out there, and concrete and materials and everything else is just going up like, like never, literally never before, do we have a mechanism for making sure that this thing comes to fruition?
Basically, I guess with this project is really frontage improvements, so they've gone through the site plan process, they've gotten approval of the improvements, so we've fully vetted what those improvements will look like, and I apologize for not bringing forward a exhibit to show you exactly what that would look like, I can do that in the future, as noted. You know, we have the site plan process, I've been talking with Greg Beckel, is the person who signed the ground lease, and I've been talking with him, I personally do not have any reservations with them moving forward and completing the project as planned. There's really no set mechanism that I could refer to though, Eileen, as far as, I'm not aware of anything.
Yeah, Laura?
This, if the lease is granted, the city has the ability to terminate the lease if the improvements aren't made, so the purpose of the lease, if you look at section number one, use of premises, less he shall make sidewalk improvements in the vicinity of the outdoor seating area in accordance with approved site plan drawings, so that's a term of the lease, and then under paragraph eight is the termination provision, where we can terminate the lease if the less he breaches any of the other terms or conditions contained herein and fails to commence to cure such breach within 15 days after written notice, so that would be the, be the action to be taken.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, Ann?
Thank you, I would just like to say, I do take the concerns under consideration of the, my fellow council members, but what strikes me is that a local business wants to make improvements and has taken the initiative to do so, and I think that really shows a lot of commitment by them, and I, we talk a lot about how things on College Hill need to be improved, and for a business to step up and want to do that, I think that really says a lot about them and I support this.
Al Sorenson?
Clayton, I'm looking specifically at these dimensions on here, I'm kind of a numbers guy, so you've got their width going out 11 feet, what is it then from the edge of their border out to the street, about five, six feet, what have you got going there? I mean, if this was to scale, I suppose it'd be about six, but, and, and that, that sidewalk as Eileen was talking about, definitely goes down at a pretty steep angle, so I'm assuming you're gonna have them build that up in some way.
Yeah, so basically, there's a planter strip there now.
Against the building, the planter strip is what they're gonna replace with the seating.
There's also a planter strip between the curb and the sidewalk that's there now, so that will actually become part of the sidewalk, and it will be a continuous grade 2% cross slope, ADA compliant sidewalk from the back of curb, seven feet, where, right now, we have a planter strip and a five-foot sidewalk behind the planter strip.
Okay, and what are we requiring for sidewalks at new construction now width?
With this project, they're getting as much as they can, which is seven feet, and we would require six feet.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, and I'm not gonna go back to the other thing, but more info would be great.
Understood.
So, I do have a concern about this property and what they're doing here, this is a rental agency, and they're looking to put seating out there, and I, it's my understanding that this specific building at times also houses college students and that kind of thing, and I do believe that this could turn into, as Nathan was making mention, to a space for them to sit out on the sidewalk in open space without a liquor permit, or a business that is gonna be monitoring that type of thing. I think it's great for seating, extra seating for their rental business, but I see other uses happening here, did they address anything like that, or is there actual apartments in the upper part of this, do you know?
There are apartments in the upper part, and I talked to Greg Beckel this morning and confirmed that that's not the intent for those people to use this space, it's basically to improve the aesthetics out there and to use for the rental office.
Okay, I, I, I hear what Ann's saying, you know, about people doing things, I mean, what looks better than a planter out there, chairs sitting on a sidewalk, but I have this concern about this property and what's gonna happen sitting out front, 'cause this is Greek, right, Nathan? You with me on that? So, I just, it's my job to look at this stuff and be able to come back and voice the concern for all the citizens of Pullman.
Mayor?
Okay, Eileen?
Let's hear what Laura has to say first.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, I understand what Councilmember Sorenson is saying, I just wanna point you back again to paragraph one in this lease, that the use of the premises is limited as an outdoor seating area for the business located at 820 Northeast Colorado Street, so it can only be used for that business, it cannot be used for residential rental purposes. If they were to use it, again, the remedy that the city would have would be 15 days written notice to cure that breach, and then we would terminate the lease.
Okay, so we will monitor that?
Yes.
Okay, now, Eileen?
Yeah, the lack, the lack of, of better drawings is really bothering me on this one in particular, and I don't know, I don't know how to get around the questions that Al and Nathan have, have brought up either, is there any, but on the other hand, I don't wanna hang this up, because the construction season is, is what it is, is there any way we could get a quick turnaround and get some drawings in front of the council at our very next meeting, and maybe have a chance to kick around some of these other, these other issues of use, because we have, we have a, we have an excellent police department, but their, their challenges are, are infinite, and I just, boy, I just don't know that this is gonna work out very well, I'm very uncomfortable with this, I need some more convincing, I don't wanna vote against it, but I'm just, I'm having trouble, I have trouble with this one.
Nathan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just wanna say I absolutely agree with Ann here, that, that it's great that they're taking responsibility and wanting to improve that area, that is awesome, but as I said before, and it's already been said, that when the business closes down, that seating is still gonna be there, correct? It's gonna be out there, so when the business shuts down for the night, that's gonna be there, and I tell you what, every time I walked out there, and it was seven o'clock, eight o'clock, whatever, I was walking my dog, people are partying up above, throwing stuff down to each other as they're coming up, parking right next to where the business is located, that's just business parking, and for me, I understand the use and the intention of the use and improvement, it's the unintended consequences of it being there, so that is my major concern, but I've already mentioned that, so.
Any other comments? Well, we'll see if we have a motion, then, does anybody wanna make a motion on this item number three, resolution R-3921?
I would move to adopt.
We hear a second. And lack of a second, the matter dies. Does that satisfy you in terms of, you said, you, Eileen, you had mentioned earlier you wanted to have a drawing come back later, but this takes care of it, correct? Okay, so item number three does not pass, item number four?
Point of clarification, is, are we supposed to be bringing this item back?
Apparently, that's what I was asking.
I would take a second look at it, but that's up to council, that's just one, just my, my thought, if it's, if it dies for lack of a second, what are our other tools available to us?
Well, unless you direct staff to bring it back with a new lease or additional terms, then it would, the matter would be closed.
Can they not apply again?
That would be up to the business, I don't know what their schedule is, I know that it was a significant time crunch for them to have this approved, due to their financings.
Plus, students will be back by the time they can even start construction.
It's the business and, yeah, so unless you direct staff to do something with it, I can point out in response to Councilmember Weller's concerns about if this business were to leave, again, the lease is specific to the business, the lease terms require that any improvements be removed to the satisfaction of the city, it is just like the Tackle Del Mar space, it is the city's property and it's leased to the specific business, and it would be terminated by the city if the business goes away.
Just clarifying, if I may.
Yeah.
I meant when it shuts down at night.
At night, yeah.
When the, when the business, you know, is closed.
The use of the property is limited to the business, not to any.
It's the unintended.
And it would be fenced off and secure.
Unintended, yeah.
I have not heard from the council, they want it back, so with that, we move on to item number four, a motion to amend the joint operating agreement for the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, with that, Mike Urban.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council, before you tonight for your consideration as amendment to the joint operating agreement with the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, and this can best be described as a housekeeping item to fulfill a request by the Idaho Secretary of State. In 2014, when the operating agreement was updated between the City of Moscow and the City of Pullman, a lot of provisions were put into place to handle the tremendous amount of construction that came afterwards, including finishing the realignment and then the terminal building that's forthcoming, but one of the things that needs to happen in the state of Idaho is the agreement need with, between two or more public agencies of two or more states needs to be filed with the Idaho Secretary of State, and then they get an opinion of the Attorney General to make sure that the agreement doesn't violate any constitutional law, you know, State of Idaho items, and so what happened is the City of Moscow went to check on this, this last spring with the Idaho Secretary of State, and they couldn't find any record of the agreement being submitted in 2014. City of Moscow sent it down to fulfill that action, whether it was lost or, it's undetermined, but the Secretary of State and Attorney General both reviewed it and came back with one small change to the agreement, and that's in section 11 regarding how long the term of the agreement is. Both parties have been operating under the perpetuity assumption of this agreement, and the state of Idaho would just like us to amend the agreement to codify that, and it does, and you can see in the attachment that the duration of the agreement is in perpetuity, and then it does continue to define the termination parts of this agreement. So with that in mind, staff is recommending that council approves, as presented, the chance for the mayor to enter into this agreement, make things right with the state of Idaho, and we will just continue operating as we always have in the joint operating agreement with the City of Moscow, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? If not, do we hear a motion on this?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to amend the joint operating agreement for the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Council.
Item number five is a motion to authorize the Public Works Department to proceed with adding the position of development engineer, reclassifying the stormwater field technician to construction inspector as requested, our new Public Works Director, Sean Coats, welcome.
Looks like it's working, first of all, let me start by saying thank you to all of you for giving me the opportunity to be here, it's true, truly my pleasure, and I'm very grateful for that, and grateful for the opportunity to serve the City of Pullman. So with that, I'll jump into the presentation here, this item is a Public Works Department Engineering Division staffing request, specifically for two positions, one is to add a development review engineer position, and the second is to reclassify a vacant stormwater field technician to a construction inspector position. And the second is to reclassify a vacant stormwater field technician to a construction inspector position. And this is what that looks like on the organization chart. If you look at the left, the existing organization chart, that vacant field tech position under the stormwater manager, we would transfer that to the reclassify position on the construction inspector side on the right. And then the other new position you see there as well is the development engineer position, and that's a brand new position that we're requesting. So starting with a description of the development engineer position, the tasks of that position would focus on engineering plan review of development applications. So reviewing site plan applications, subdivision applications, looking at the engineering plans and specifications that, that come to our engineering division to make sure that all of the, the construction of the infrastructure would be per our standards. And another element of this, this role would be to provide a one-stop shop for the development community and provide a liaison for the development community. So if you think about this from the developer's perspective or from the perspective of the developer's professional consultants, they like to know exactly who they can go to at any given time to ask a question, to say, how do I address this issue with a sewer main or, or an intersection? And they don't want to be guessing on who they should go to. And so this develop, this position would offer a one-stop shop for that. So any, any engineering questions could go straight to this position. And then the third item on there is to advise on infrastructure capital needs to advance development. So if you have one person in charge of, of this element of the development infrastructure, they start to see a pattern. It's a pattern of, well, we're, we're seeing a lot of development in this area of, of the community, but not in this area. And why is that? You know, is it an infrastructure-related issue? Is there an intersection that needs to be constructed? Is there a sewer main that needs to be constructed to facilitate that? And so they can advise on our capital planning process to help advance, advance development. Need for the position? So the current development review functions are split between multiple engineering staff. Largely that load is falling on Deputy Director Clayton Forstmann as well as our city engineer. And they get pulled in a lot of different directions, trying to implement the capital plan, implementing various initiatives. And so if we can lump this development review work into one position that would be an engineering staff with probably engineering training license or early in their career with a professional engineering license, we can help that engineer train. It's actually a very good way to, to bring engineers up through the ranks. They get to see a lot of different work by a lot of different consultants that way. But it also frees up some of the time of our existing staff. And, and that's time that's badly needed, and I'll talk about that in a little bit more in detail. We talked about the one-stop shop, but the, the last item that I want to focus on here too is staff capacity. The current frontline experience of the engineering team is that in the development world, you can't anticipate the development workload. So we could have 10 applications come in next week, or we could have no applications come in next week. And those, the amount of time that it takes to review those applications could range anywhere from eight hours to as many as 120 hours per application. So it, it's very difficult to plan that workload and be responsive to it. So when we're trying to develop staffing plan and understand how that workload is, is going to advance and, and touch the department, it's, it's very difficult to do. We're entirely reliant on the development community. So another element of those applications that come in the door is that there are strict timelines associated with those development applications. Essentially, we don't want to hold up the developers. Generally, we've got about a 30-day turnaround timeframe to review those applications. And so as a result, we immediately prioritize those. We want to make sure we're keeping that development community moving. But what that often results in is that you've got CIP, CIP projects and initiatives work that has to then move to the back burner to make sure we're responsive to the development applications. And then lastly, the staff capacity in the engineering division is, is over allocated. I've talked to Clayton about this specifically, and there, there are five projects. Three of them are capital projects and two are initiative projects that, that have been delayed, some of them as many as, as two years. And, and the reason those have been delayed is the, the staff have been responding to these development applications. And if you look at the number of development applications that have been coming through the door, this slide gives you a little bit of data and a sense of, of how development has been increasing over time in Pullman. And, you know, looking back to about 2015, you know, we really had the staffing in place to be able to accommodate that level of development. But 2016 and on, the staff have essentially started to get behind since then. So they've, they've been soldiering on frankly since 2016, if you look at, at this workload. So, you know, they, they, they've said, yeah, we, we need a little help here to be able to manage this workload. So I'll transition now to the construction inspector position. The tasks of the construction inspector are to inspect private infrastructure construction, which will become public infrastructure. So that's the water mains, the sewer mains, the streets and the stormwater infrastructure. And we want to ensure that that construction is per the city standards. And one of the advantages of having this position out there and, and getting more touches with, with the contractors, with the developers' contractors, the developers' engineers, is that we identify issues earlier before they get expensive and contentious to fix later. So for example, if there's a sewer main that, that inspector can inspect while it's going in, and the inspector identifies a problem, he can tell the contractor about it right away before the trench is ever backfilled and before, let's say, pavement goes down. So if we identify an issue after pavement goes down over that piping, it's very expensive at that point to dig it up and, and replace it and make a repair to the infrastructure before the city takes that on. The other element of, of the construction inspector that I, that I really want to emphasize here is, is that this is a critical piece of asset management. And that is, when we install infrastructure, we want to make sure that it's installed such a way that we get the longest and most efficient lifecycle cost out of that infrastructure. So an example of that is that I would give, give is the pipe, a pipe installation example. I've seen one case where we had a water main break after a, a water main had been installed just for 20 years. And typically, a water main should last anywhere from 80 to as much as 150 years. So, you know, if you think about the replacement cost of that at $400 per foot, all of a sudden, it gets really expensive to have to replace that infrastructure early. And so if we've got an inspector that's out there touching that, seeing that, getting out in front of this before we ever accept that infrastructure into the city, we can head off a lot of those issues and make sure that we're getting good capital assets to start with. So the frontline experience currently in the city engineering division is that all the engineering staff are involved in performing inspections as they have time. But again, keep in mind that they're trying to balance that with their, their other work duties, making sure that we're completing our capital plans and responding to the development applications. And so essentially, the inspections pull our staff from the capital and initiative projects work. So you're, you're seeing a trend here that those capital projects and those initiative projects, they're the ones that end up getting put on the back burner so that we can respond to the immediate construction issue. So the funding that we're proposing for the development engineer addition is a 0.4 FTE from the stormwater fund and 0.6 FTE from the utility fund. And the funding that we're proposing to reclassify the stormwater field technician to construction inspector is change one FTE stormwater fund to 0.4 FTE stormwater fund, as well as pull 0.6 FTEs from the utility fund. And the result of that in a two-year span of the budget for stormwater is effectively a net budget impact of, of negative 83,000. Or in this case, we're spending $83,000 less out of the stormwater fund. The impact, the two-year impact to the utility fund budget is 195,000 to fund salaries and benefits for these positions. So with that, I will take questions.
Okay, Nathan first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I like where you're thinking this going, already hitting the ground, you know, the proactive approach. I would like to turn it over to Mike as far as the health of the utility fund to fund this. Can you go over a little bit about, is this a doable proposition?
Yes, and furthermore, I think I've proved myself to be very fiscally responsible so before any new positions were taken on. I really put Clayton through the wringer on this ahead of Sean's arrival because we started on this several months ago. And we finally reached a point where I believe not only can the utility fund support this, but I could support this from a city administrator in a financial position, knowing what projects are coming down the pike, you know, getting those American Rescue Plan dollars spent with the downtown redevelopment. So it's become more and more clear to me that I thought that this position should move forward, and it happened to time out really well with the new Public Works Director coming here to present it on our behalf.
Okay, just one other question.
Sure.
That's all right. As far as the organizational chart, and perhaps this is a little bit more into the minutia, you have it as its own separate area. So it's, the development engineer would not be under the city engineer, is that correct?
That's correct.
Do you feel that they would be falling out of the loop of the things that are occurring as far as in the city, as far as the city engineer?
That's a, that's a great question. I, I think typically what you would see in most communities is that these positions would fall under the city engineer's hat. It could be structured that way, certainly. If you look at the number of reports to the city engineer currently, it's, it's at six. And typically, once you get much beyond that, it's, it's difficult to manage all of your direct reports. So I think that was part of the thinking, and then correct me if I'm wrong, Clayton. The other way to do that, if you did want these positions to report under the city engineer, would be to set up more of a hierarchy underneath the city engineer. So for example, the development engineer might report directly to the city engineer, but then the construction inspector would report to the development engineer.
Okay, I appreciate that. I, I will defer to both of your expertise regarding the organization. I just wanted to make sure and possibly additional roundtables between all of them to keep everybody in the loop. Yeah?
Great, great suggestion.
Other comments or questions? Al?
Couple of questions on things here and a couple of comments. So am I seeing this right, that we're going to now have, we will have two field engineers basically going out doing the inspecting on these developments? Is that what the two are at the bottom? Or am I, are they not the same? I'm a little confused.
Okay. Are, are you referring to the engineering aides?
Yes.
Okay. So the engineering aides do a number of tasks. They're not specifically dedicated to development review. They're not specifically dedicated to construction inspector. So they do some field work, and we've got them part-time. We don't have them year-round.
Okay.
But yes, we use them in the capacity that we can. Oftentimes, they're engineering students, so they're supporting the division workload.
Okay, and the two positions that we're going to create here are, are which two on these, on this chart?
The, the two new positions.
The two dark blue?
Yeah.
Okay. So I have a lot of contact with general contractors, subcontractors, and all that throughout town. And, and some of the comments that I get from them is, is that it appears sometimes that the inspectors that come out and the people that come out and doing things are, are saying different things. They're not always on the same page. They're not always using the same playbook. And I think that that's something that really needs to make sure that we're treating everyone the same. Because I know for a fact that some of the contractors that are out there, they, they hope for this one and not that one. And I'm just being honest upfront with you here. And it causes problems. And, and I do want to make sure that everything we're doing, everybody's playing by the same rules, okay? And so I just wanted to make sure that we're consistent on that. I think this is a good plan. You know, we never did hire when we moved Shiloh into Rob's position. We never did rehire for Shiloh's position. So we've saved a little bit of money there over the years, is that right? Glenn, I think that's right. We did, we never did hire anybody back. And so I'm assuming that you've spoken with him and the movement around of stormwater stuff is okay with him?
Yeah.
Okay? Because I know that there is, there's a lot of work going on, and everybody's stressed out. And I want to just make sure we get it so we don't load up too much here and we can keep things going around.
Great comment.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep, I do. And, and I completely agree with what you said. And, and I think, you know, when it comes to inspection and enforcing our regulations, I want to be clear, I want to, want to be consistent, and I want to be timely. And that's what, what I'm going to be stressing with the engineering group. Those, those are critical items when you're talking about this, this type of a role.
Okay, and I, and I know you're, you haven't had time to look at everything yet, and I'm sure you'll be doing that over the next few months and things. I have one other quick comment. I found the presentation to us that we had in our packet a little bit confusing again with the numbers. It wasn't clear enough for me. I'd like to see it broken a little bit differently like we do with some other employees where you have, here's the wage, here's the benefits, here's the total. Because that, that one page that you have where it shows negative 200 and something thousand, and then this over here and that over there was extremely confusing to me, and I play with numbers every day. So just a little more clarity on that kind of thing as we go. It's my night to pick on Clayton, I guess. But you see what I'm saying? It just would help me be able to look at this and go, oh yeah, this makes really good sense. I know this much money's coming from here, and I know you've got point four and point six. But thank you.
Glad to do it.
Any other comments? And if not, do I hear a motion on this?
Yeah, I move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. A motion to authorize the Public Works Department to proceed with adding the position of development engineer and reclassifying stormwater field technician to construction inspector as requested. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Item number six is a motion to approve cost of living wage adjustment for non-represented staff of 3% effective third quarter. Mike Urban.
Yeah, I lost you there. Oh. Okay, Eric, can you hear me in the back? Okay, I'll just talk really loud because I don't know what happened all of a sudden here. Okay, so.
One, two, I, yeah, mine went, I have a green light, but, oh, there it is.
Hey, okay, we're back. Sorry, those of you watching at home, we'll, we'll figure out where the gremlins are on this one. So again, thanks. Council, before you tonight, for your consideration is a request for approval of a cost of living adjustment or a COLA for non-represented staff effective for, starting in 2021, quarter three, at 3%. So during the 2021, 2022 biennial budget process, cost of living wage adjustment for non-represented staff was not included due to the unknown financial ramifications of the COVID pandemic. We started our budget process in July, and we were only a couple of months into it, and we didn't know how bad things were actually going to get. So when that budget was presented, council did task me with coming back at, at the end of the second quarter with a review of where we had come and where we think we're going. And part of what I did on June 22nd is I sent council memo, which is also included in this agenda packet, kind of updating them on the high-level financial operations as well as my first quarter financial update. And I have a second quarter financial update coming up very soon here. And putting together what would make for enough positive moves that a COLA for these non-represented staff, all 77 of them, I believe, yep, to be brought up to speed with the rest of the city who are under bargaining contracts. So in that memo, I just want to hit some of the highlights here and not go ad nauseam. But in 2017, that was the last year that the non-reps were still behind the rest of the bargained units. And in 2018, you can see that column in the memo. And in 2018, you can see that column in the memo where non-represented staff started to receive a 2% to try to keep up with some of the other bargaining units. And going into 2021, in that last column, you can see that there is, there was no COLA for the non-represented staff, the other groups did. I just want to touch on the sworn and the support on police, because it gets a little confusing in here. So sworn police received a one and a half COLA in January, and then another one and a half in July to make a total of three. And then the support staff received a one and a half, one-time payment in January, and then a one and a half COLA to get their three. It was just bargained at two different ways. So again, this group that we're talking about here, this is 77 individuals, almost a third of city staff, 32.4% of the FTEs. And of those 77, 23 of those live in our enterprise and utility funds that Council Member Weller was bringing the question on the last item about, and how those funds were doing, and we continue to build the reserves on those and draw revenue on those utility funds. The other 54 live in the general fund, and I really get worked up about the general fund and making sure we can keep that general fund preserved, because that's police, fire, library, recreation, HR, finance, and that whole group. So that's where the sales tax comes in. That's the, all the sales tax comes into the general fund, and that is our most volatile revenue source. So as you can see, if you split out the 3%, which I'm recommending, and the reason we're recommending that 3% is a mid-year at 3% really averages out to one and a half for the entire year. The general fund will be touched 54,174 for those folks that live in that fund. The general fund has been hanging in there quite, quite well, as you can see by my last sales tax report, and that's where I always start when we talk about the general fund. So the sales tax report that came in last month, June for April, was, was strong. We continue to outpace what was budgeted sales tax-wise as we go through, and you'll notice that those one-time sales tax revenues off of construction, those are coming off of the 22, 2020 highs back towards the 2019. So it's not this artificial bump like we were seeing last year. And I think I said several times, if one-time construction sales tax is what carries us through COVID, we'll take it and figure out things at the end. So we're not seeing that artificial bump as well on the construction part of it, but construction still remains very, very strong. The other big thing that happened is the pandemic restrictions came to an end a lot sooner than we anticipated when we budgeted last year. We're looking at a full stadium of football coming up here in the fall, and, you know, I'm excited on that for several different reasons, but I'm going to stay financial on this one, is we were only anticipating a 50% admission into the football stadium. And if you look at our home games, seven of them, and this is really, really important, seven of them are home games, those are big weekends for us, and five of those weekends are before the middle of October, which are very, very nice around here. And people are looking to come back to Pullman, and it'll continue to help us as long as we can keep all these other pieces moving forward and keeping our community healthy. So there's a few items I discuss in here about non-rep staff keeping up with compression on their bargaining unit groups that they supervise. And the other thing that I looked at real closely here are two other general fund items, that was property tax collections. Last year, I was in front of you about this time, my words, a little panicky, about if property taxes would be kept up. I could tell you through this point last year, we're, our collections are up 10.3% over the same period. So the property taxes are rolling in a little bit quicker than last year. And I know there was a 1% increase in property tax, but I'm talking about a 10.3% increase collection early in the first half. So that's a really stable and strong sign. The one thing, I don't want to paint it all roses here, and is the admissions tax is lagging. But again, I just fulfilled the rest of my season tickets for football, so there's a chunk this month from July coming from Mike Urban for admissions tax for football tickets, and I know that my buddy out there, Sean, did the same thing. So my deposit that went over from last year is now getting supplemented with the rest, and I think we're going to see the admissions tax pop here really quick this next month. But right now, it is lagging, because there is other parts of the admissions tax, like theater revenues, that are being reported. So I'm taking all these things into account. I sat down and had a long conversation with the Finance Director, and we both believe that we're able to maintain all the previous approved budget activities, fulfill our financial obligations, and maintain the City Council General Fund Reserve Goals through 2022 with this COLA to the non-represented staff. So with that, I am requesting that the City Council consider approval of the COLA as presented, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, go to Pat first.
Thank you, Mike. This is always an area that I like to see that we take care of, and I appreciate you moving forward and bringing this to us for approval, so you have my 100% support. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we, as we were talking about this, as one of the major goals of the council over the years, to take care of employees too. So Nathan, you had a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just like to echo what Council Member Wright had said, absolutely, you got to take care of all employees regardless. I think also, it should really be noted, as you say here with the general fund, you've, you've kept us very, very healthy and fiscally responsible, and, you know, above water, really appreciated. I remember when Barney Waldrop was serving, and the goal was, I think somewhere he was wanting 14% or 13%. And, you know, Troy, I think, was the financial director at the time, and we weren't sure, we, we wanted, and we kept getting there, but you've kept us way above board, so appreciate it, really appreciate it, and absolutely, I agree with Pat.
Okay, Ann?
Thank you. Thank you for this, and as always, all the great information that you've given us. I just want to say a couple of things. You know, the people who have been here all through COVID and working and keeping this city going is a lot of this general, the unrepresented employees. So I agree with everyone here that we should, that I would like to do that. Also, just as a point of information, I heard this morning that WSU released a study that, a result of a study that, that found that employees who felt cared for and were taken care of during the pandemic are happier and are more likely to stay now after, you know, post-pandemic. And with our loss of a lot of employees to retirement, and all these new folks that have just started and come in, I think it's a great way to support them and show them that we do appreciate them, and we want to, we want them to stay.
Al Sorensen.
Thanks, Mike. I have a question here. So how do we, this is good, this needs to be done, absolutely, but how do we, how do we do this in a normal year? Do we look at this every year? Do we do it whenever we do the represented groups? Could we get on a more regular schedule with this in regards to COLAs for, you see where I'm going?
I, I do, and I very, very much appreciate that, because this is not the first time I've been in front of this group, and I've been here for still a short period of time. I would like to get this intertwined with the budget approval as well, and have these try to mirror our represented groups to make sure that, again, we're taking care of that compression. I'm working with the new HR manager, and we do have several contracts that are open right now. So my goal going forward is to make this very consistent with the budget and still being predictable to our staff. I got a couple ideas I'd like to work out, so it, it becomes more fluid. This was an exceptional circumstance. I've been through one downturn in the economy in your guys' chair, and remember how terrible that felt, and, you know, frankly, we didn't know what the soup was going to look like in this COVID response, and here we are, what did we decide, 16 months later, that our finances are stable, and we were able to maintain staff, except for one position, all the way through it, and we're, we're starting to resume normal operations and starting to jump into some new projects as well that are very exciting. So I, I think the financial future and the full future of the city is very, very good, and as long as I'm here, I'm watching that general fund carefully, because drawing it down to a dangerous point when we're really in trouble, it's, it's a rainy day fund for the city of Pullman, which we desperately need, because we can't always count on the feds to come in with CARES money or the American Rescue Plan, or if the state would ever step in, and under what circumstances they would do that.
Yeah, I think now's a, a great time to kind of get this included in the budget stuff, and, and instead of us lagging behind for these unrepresented, I think that's a great idea. So I'll look forward to seeing what your ideas are when we come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further comments? If not, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. A motion to approve the cost of living wage adjustment for non-represented staff of 3% effective the third quarter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you on behalf of a grateful staff. Thank you, council.
Our last item tonight is a motion to approve the purchase of two new ambulances for 2022. And with that, Ryan Lancaster.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm here to request authorization to order two new ambulances. We currently have two ambulances, which are about 15 years old and are scheduled for replacement in 2022. Due to, as we've seen with other vehicles, we're expecting a very long lead time on these vehicles as well. And so we are requesting authorization to order them now, so that they'll be available in 2022. It should be noted that this is, this request for approval is in advance of the 2022, 2027 CIP program. If approved, we will also need to submit a budget amendment for the 2022 budget, which we will do later this fall. The new vehicles include a, an upgrade to the ambulances to include a power lift system, which the Fire Department are planning to fund at a cost of 44,000. The total cost for the ambulances, the power load system and other equipment is 692,900, We intend to use the existing cooperative agreement with HGHC, as we've done in the past, to great success. And as well as with other fire department equipment, we have an agreement with WSU in which we, we anticipate they will fund us 18% of the vehicle's cost. So a breakdown of the cost of the vehicle, the City of Pullman Equipment Rental Fund will fund 519,000. Fire Department will fund 44,000 for the upgrades, and WSU 128,000. The ambulance replacement fund bank at the end of 2021 is anticipated to be 677,000. We will be, we will be, the Fire Department will be retaining one of the vehicles to replace the existing hazmat vehicle they have now, which is also a retired ambulance, and then we'll be surplusing the hazmat vehicle, as well as one of the current ambulances. Any questions I can field?
Okay, Al?
So just, I think I know what this means, but can you tell me about the power load system? Is that where it's going to lift the gurney into the ambulance without?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it's a power load to lift the gurney.
Okay.
Yep.
Does this mean Captain Ryber, since you're in the back there, I know you're not going to get excused for this, but does this mean that we still will roll an engine? Because on lifts, I know we have, we have to have extra people to try and lift through a house and things of that nature. Does this eliminate another engine to run with the ambulance, or how's this work?
It doesn't eliminate our need for people on the scene, but it certainly is a back saver.
Oh, yeah.
And the patient that's appearing in the back of the ambulance.
Oh, yeah.
It's an exceedingly expensive system. I was a little hesitant when I put the first one in. We've got three of them now, this will complete our fleet every ambulance, we'll have one. I think, if you say one back in through the price of it.
Oh, yes.
It's, it's a game changer for the safety.
I think all of us who have done ambulance duty still know what that back feels like, and we know, we can, we can cite the exact case that we had left, I, yeah, so.
So one, one other, so we're going to get these ordered now, and we don't have to pay for them until we get them, is that correct?
Correct. So we will receive them in 2022 and pay for them.
Okay, okay.
Anticipating quarter two.
This will be a 2021 model in 2022 or 2020?
2022 model delivered probably about May of next year.
I see, okay. Other questions? Yes, Mike?
I just want to touch on one thing that Ryan did mention, but went pretty quickly on. I want to, this is a really different year because of all the backlog to get equipment. So this is ahead of the 2022 CIP. So this council action certainly has effect on the CIP process as soon as it gets going here next month, and that's not normal, so I just wanted to say, due to extragent circumstances is why we're in front of you.
Well, we also experienced a delay with the buses, and how long it took with the buses to get ordered, so, which you totally understand, and.
And we're okay to approve it ahead of the CIP?
Absolutely, because eventually the CIP comes to this group for that financial point, too. It's just when it comes back and, did we approve this already? Yes.
And it comes in the replacement schedule, too, so it's all there.
I like to run it the other way, so we know exactly what's coming first, but yeah, this is an exceptional circumstance, and I encourage this to come in front of council early.
If there are no more questions, do I hear a motion on this?
Move to adopt.
Second.
Moving second. Motion to approve the purchase of two new ambulances for 2022. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have not heard of any new business to come before the council tonight, so with that, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Moving second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?